All right. Good evening. My name is Rebecca Bench. It is Wednesday, May 11th, 2022. It is 7:00 PM, and I am calling this meeting of the Hatfield School Committee to order. We will begin our meeting with public comment. If you are in the audience and would like to make a public comment, you can make yourself known. And if you are joining us on Google Meet, you can enter in the chat. Looks like we already have one public comment.
Yes, Nurse Jean Hobby.
All right. Go right ahead then.
Nurse Hobby, are you there?
I am, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you for allowing me to speak. First of all, I want to thank everyone on the school committee for advocating as strongly as you did for passing the recent budget. It's a great start, especially for the educational support professionals, and I would like to thank and acknowledge them because they are the eyes and ears of the nurses in both schools. They get to know the kids very well, and they know when a student may not be themselves. And they're quick to bring them to the nurse, but also to stay with them and comfort them. So it's great to see these professionals acknowledged, and they are truly professional. They're great to work with. Secondly, I just want to submit a request for the school committee to consider at some point—I brought this Wellness Committee meeting a week or so ago—and that is to ask that the school committee consider forming an informal task group to address infectious diseases in general. We all realize that we're in a season of morphing from all things COVID and looking at other infectious diseases that we've dealt with in the past, pre-COVID. And it's been the practice and custom of school nurses everywhere to let parents know when a student may—for example, we receive a report from the family that the student has been diagnosed with strep throat or hand, foot, and mouth disease, also highly contagious infectious diseases. Our materials, the letters that we send out, are probably getting a little old, and it would be great to bring together stakeholders—parents, community leaders, public health officials—to just take a look at protocols, helping us draft written protocols. We don't have anything formal to help us as we move forward, ideally to be proactive so that if we do have an outbreak of whatever, that we have some plans in place so that we can be prepared and not have to wait for state officials or anybody else to tell us what to do. So I'm just respectfully asking that you consider that, and would welcome input from anybody at a more appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comments and move on to our informational reports. We will start with our student representative, Ms. Hadley Sineal.
All right. So we've had a very successful month. On the 29th of April, we held our Spring Fling Dance. It was the first dance back since the hiatus of COVID, and it went really well, and we had a great turnout. We raised over $400 for the American Cancer Society, and our Student Council will attend Relay for Life in June at Smith-Booke, and the money will be donated there. The Student Council also helped to facilitate the meet and greet with the school committee candidates. We collected questions from students during crew and then worked with Dr. Driscoll and other students to turn them into like a concrete list of prompts for community members to learn more about the candidates and what they stand for. We also have prom this Friday, so be on the lookout for pictures. Spring sports are going really well. Baseball and softball both had some really good wins this week. Senior Day for the baseball team is Monday, May 16th, and softball senior day is the following day, Tuesday, May 17th. So definitely try to catch those if you can.
Right. Thank you, Hadley. Do committee members have any questions for Hadley? It just sounds so exciting, such an exciting time of year.
Is there a theme for prom?
Not that I know of. I mean—
That's not an—okay.
Yeah. It's not a thing anymore. Can I go? Yeah.
Can you go? No, Jenny, can't go.
That's wonderful.
She wants to be chaperone next year. Yay!
That's great, Hadley. Thank you so much. We always appreciate hearing our student voice. All right, let's go to Superintendent, Mr. Michael Wood.
Thank you. My report's in your packet, but for the public, just highlighting a few things. We had applied for—I always get it wrong—MIAA—no, M-I—yeah, MIAA grant in the fall for a engineering study of our HVAC systems primarily at both schools. They finally completed that, and I do have a copy of that, and I can share it with the entire committee. It unfortunately came too late to discuss with capital, but I will obviously put that on their radar to talk about after we meet and discuss how we want to move forward on a number of the items. So that's—it's good to have that piece of research in our back pocket. This past week, we had—actually, last week, we had our student activities accounts audited. Riley has been after them to come in. We have to have them done every three years, and she just happened to catch them when they had a window open. They said, "Oh, well, we can do it next week." So in they came, and we did fine. There won't be any official findings. Some recommendations that they had were just on—any level of cash that we take in should be given a receipt, and also that we reconcile with the town on the final ballots, but they're recommending that we do reconciling more often, three times a year, they suggested. That is something that the town also has to fit us in to do that, so it's something we'll work with Sharon to make that happen. I met with the Superintendent of Hadley Public Schools to talk about a shared services possibility with—for fruit services. And so we're in ongoing conversations. I met again with Mr. Halpin, who would be the director, and to further say, you know, "Are you interested in this? There's no pressure. You don't need to do this." It's definitely a small savings on our part because we'd be paying roughly 50%, but where it's—it ups our cost a little bit because it would be 50% of the total cost of employing him, and we would then have to pay 50% of the insurance because Hadley pays, obviously, for the insurance unless we had an agreement with the town that they participated in that somehow. So I'll talk more with Marlene, the town administrator, to see if that's a possibility, but other than that, that would come from our budget as part of the cost. But there would be a savings of maybe around $15,000 or so to do it if we go forward. But our goal is to wrap that up. We recently attended the Pioneer Valley Excellence in Teaching Award Ceremony to recognize our math—middle school math teacher, Phil Patelli. I don't know, just may talk more about that, but it was a wonderful evening, and I think a good time was had by all for that. And as Hadley pointed out, we have a number of events that are going on at the high school, certainly, and at the elementary school in terms of end of the year. It would be great if we can make sure you have the schedule in time that—for the ones that involve public, to certainly have school committee a part of and witness, or really any time, just to kind of come on in and see what's going on in the schools. It's definitely—the energy is there. We're meeting regularly for our math curriculum work. We're trying to look at something for K through 8. Certainly, we may limit it to K to 5, depending on what our resources allow us to do, but we are looking at a number of providers out there. We just recently kind of reviewed again Savvas, which is what we have, and we met with the representative to kind of see what is it that we could do to address some of the teacher concerns, because teachers have a number of concerns with that particular program. So we had that grouping. We also looked at something called CMP Math, which is a very much hands-on, problem-solving mathematics program for middle school, so it would be grades 6 through 8. So however we go forward, it probably will be something where we do something K through 5 and then 6 through 8. So our 6th grade program is more connected to our 7th and 8th grade as opposed to the other way around, so that the students have an easier way to transition to middle school. Tomorrow, we'll be having our first-ever Professional Development Committee meeting this school year, so we'll be planning things like the math work that we might need to do, looking at everything that's part of our policies that we need to address in terms of training for next year, but also looking at teaching strategies that teachers feel that they might want to have be brought up to speed. I think internally, one of the things that we're looking at is trying to look at our intervention system as a whole so that we have something that's more clearly outlined, again, K through 12, and make sure teachers feel comfortable to know how to decide on what interventions need to be used, but also when to intervene and how to go about that process within their classrooms. So that's on the road for looking at that as well, and we hope to have a plan by the end of June, end of school year in June. And just update, we are—our COVID numbers are very low. Just reported, we had a total of—my memory serves me right—it was a total of four that we reported to at SA and two at Hatfield Elementary, and so we continue to monitor that, but it's certainly nothing that we're concerned about going forward. And that's my report.
All right. What questions does the committee have for Mr. Wood?
I have one. Regarding the HVAC assessment that you had done, and you said that there were some items that were too late to put on capital planning for this year, are they issues that can wait a year until they get on for next year, or are they things that we're going to have to deal with this coming year?
No, they're things that can wait. I mean, they're just recognition of when things need to be repaired. Like, right now, in fact, I just met with the electrician. There's nothing broken—well, there are two elements that are broken at HES, but there's nothing broken that needs immediate repair that we're not already aware of that they can do. These are things that are essentially preventative in nature that we need to get in the queue to make sure that we can do the repair and then rebuild so that we continue to keep them healthy.
So they don't anticipate any major issues in the next year for us?
I will tell you, to be quite honest, that it was a bumpy year all the way throughout. It seemed every other day we were having heating issues at either one of the schools, and, you know, that's part of this trying to get onto a schedule of routine maintenance that this report is suggesting we do.
But there was nothing they picked up that—
No.
Okay. Good. Fingers crossed.
Yeah. Thank goodness.
So looking at the math curriculum that you guys are taking a look at, I appreciate hearing that there's a lot of teacher input going into making that choice and what you're looking at. How are you getting input on CMP? Like, what's the process for exploring that beyond talking to the people who sell it? What's—how are you doing?
Well, I think if that's a program we're interested in, we will reach out to districts that are using it so that we can hear from them firsthand what's going on.
We're just not there yet.
We're just not there yet.
Gotcha.
We wanted to learn what it was about.
I'm excited—I just want to say I'm excited to hear about the Professional Development Planning Committee getting rolling. That's exciting. I think we have seen the upsides for our kiddos when all of those teachers are rowing together. Reading comes to mind. We have some great folks in our team that have managed that, but that works because every teacher got trained. So I'm excited to see how that comes together. On the COVID update, the numbers are for which period of time?
The last week, Wednesday to Thursday—excuse me, Thursday to Wednesday.
Wednesday being today.
Wednesday being today.
Okay.
Can you just clarify for me? I think maybe I didn't fully understand. First, I just want to say I'm very interested in the idea of sharing services with Hadley for Mr. Halpin. He's doing great.
He's doing awesome.
And I think it's a win for us, you know, if we can do this. Can you just explain again for me the insurance issues? It has to do with which system gives him insurance and what percentage is covered?
Correct.
Is that it? Okay.
So most likely—to make it—to be a carrot, enticing, thank you. For Mr. Halpin, the Hadley School System has a different insurance pay plan, so it'd be most likely he would go with them, so they would become the fiduciary for this. So essentially, we'll cut them a check for whatever expense there is to have him as an employee.
Got it. Including the benefits package. So like the salary plus the benefits.
Correct.
Cut it in half. Makes sense.
He would then technically be a Hadley employee.
He would, and we talked about that at great length, and we will most likely have workout language that says if at any point we decide to dissolve the partnership, that he would revert back to being a Hatfield employee, which he wants.
Okay.
All right. Interesting. Well, we look forward to more details, I think. I think it sounds like a really—
Would there be any cost savings because of more bulk purchasing or something, if he's purchasing for two schools?
Yeah, that's a great question. We talked a little bit about that, and especially more on the commodity side of things in terms of the ordering. I don't know the answer to that, and neither does he. I don't think so. I don't think so.
Is that because we already belong to a collective?
We already belong to a collaborative that does—the—you know, we get the discount and so forth, so I just don't think so.
I just think, no, if food really fell under the collaborative purchasing, I didn't think so.
It's not that particular.
It's not that collaborative.
But the collaborative collective purchasing that you do—
Yes, you do some collective—
You know, fresh food and things like that—
Right.
Doesn't really fall under that, so perhaps purchasing larger quantities than for just one district.
Yeah. It's possible. I mean, it's logical to ask the question, and I'm sure that if the opportunity presents itself. Like, he was talking about some of the ways the commodities get split up, which I didn't realize this is how they do it here. It's actually per school system, how many dollars they allot you, and you go online and you buy—it's almost like a little bit of a race. You have to go online—they announce it at 1:00 PM. You have to be ready to go at 12:59, and you go on. And you have to buy exactly the dollar amount that you're allotted, and if you—God forbid, should you make a mistake or have to go back because you didn't buy all your dollars, because you—you can't change anything you've already purchased, he said. You have to eliminate your basket and go out, start all over, and by then, things maybe have been sold out. So it's just—
That's crazy.
So if you get on at like 1:05, do you like not get—like you don't get your desired commodities?
I may not. I may not.
They're selling it on Instagram.
Wow. So can he buy for two districts at the same time in that forum?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just, you know—
Bigger cart, I guess.
Yeah.
It just has to be a cart. I'm getting nervous just thinking about it.
Yeah.
That sounds very stressful.
No pressure, right?
He's doing great. That's awesome.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, of course.
So the math—we're just starting really looking at math curriculum, right? We're not looking at keeping what we have, or we're trying to see how people, folks feel about what we have?
So we're continuing to look at what we currently have, but it—I think that it's a stronger option that we might look elsewhere—
Okay.
—to feel more comfortable and get more buy-in—
Okay.
—because the experience has not been very positive, and there's a strong feeling that it's just too language-heavy, that it doesn't—it's really not for all students, and so there's too much effort put into supplementing with other materials—
Yeah.
—that it's not efficient for our staff, for our students.
Yeah. I have a follow-up question to that. So if we make a shift, when do we need to make a decision so that we have materials ready to go for the start of the year?
We'll have a decision one way or the other by the end of the school year this year.
But does that mean materials will be available?
Yeah, we can't buy them before July 1st anyway.
So we'll have a decision. Materials will be available, and any training that needed to happen for that, we have room on the calendar to make that happen?
Right now, we do, yes.
Okay.
Good question. That's awesome. All right.
One meeting.
Did you have a personnel report, Mr. Wood?
It is attached. There is one noted there. Ms. Patty Benson, our preschool teacher, is leaving at the end of the school year. I do have two—I think—is it—no, okay. Never mind.
Okay.
There will be others announced in our next meeting.
All right. Thank you for that. All right. We will move along to Smith Academy and hear from Dr. Driscoll.
Thank you. So first off, Happy Teachers Appreciation Day last week to all of our teachers here, and to our school nurses. Today's School Nurse Appreciation Day. So Nurse Martha and Nurse Jean, thank you for your monumental efforts over the last forever, it seems like. And as Superintendent Wood said, we did celebrate our Pioneer Valley Teacher of Excellence Award winner this last week. That was Mr. Patelli, the middle school, middle school math teacher, which was a nice night. Last month, the casting crew of Your Goodman, Charlie Brown, congratulations to them. They put on a fantastic show at the elementary school, so thanks for hosting us, and it was just—it was really great to see that hard work come together. Our one-to-one program is up and running at the middle school level, which is great, so we have students that are using Chromebooks, able to bring them home to continue working at home if they so choose, and they've been—once we updated them, they've been working just fantastically. No issues with MCAS or anything like that with those. MCAS season is—we are right in the middle, towards the tail end of it now. We're finishing up 7th grade, actually finished up today. 8th grade will finish up on Friday. Then we'll have—next week, we'll have 10th grade math, and at the beginning of June, we'll have high school science, so we'll be able to wrap that up. A number of my updates were already shared, so I won't go too deep into them, but congratulations to our students. They facilitated a really nice meet and greet with the school committee candidates last week. They made the local news. They were local celebrities on Channel 22. It was just really great to see them getting involved in local politics and, you know, just finding their voice. Our 8th grade is getting ready for their nation's classroom trip in a couple of weeks. They're very excited to take part, and we're excited for them to take part, too. Student Council had their dance. They raised a whole bunch of money for cancer research, which was fantastic. Crew Blocks have been working on neurodiversity recently, so they've been viewing a documentary made by Landmark College, which we're also working—we've entered into a partnership for dual enrollment for next year, which is fantastic, and working through associated discussions in crew time, which is—has been great. Heads Up is a Hatfield organization that brings awareness to mental health. They're hosting a screening of Race to be Human on the 25th of this month. The documentary looks at issues of racial equity and allyship, and so following that, there's a panel of community members, including a representative from Smith Academy, from our Student Equity Alliance, will have a discussion, panel discussion. It's also going to provide an opportunity during our crew time to—for students to provide—to have some of those discussions. Sports photos coming up on May 16th. We also have—today, we added some dates for senior days for sports, so on Monday, next Monday, at 4 o'clock is our senior day for baseball. Tuesday at 4 o'clock is senior day for our softball, both of our varsity teams. And we are slowly stepping on the accelerator as we head towards the end of the year. It feels like we're just—you know, it's coming really fast. So May 27th is our last day for seniors. Graduation is on June 3rd. We have prom this week, which I get to go to for the first time since I went to prom.
Yay!
Next week, we have our senior banquet. We have all of our AP exams either happening now or wrapping up. We have a field trip for band coming up for the Gradius trip. We have our spring concert. We have—we have all kinds of stuff coming, so we'll be trying to communicate those dates as clearly as we can, continuing to do so as we head towards the end of the year.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
You bet.
What does the committee have for Dr. Driscoll?
So just to kind of confirm what some of these events are that school committee members would be welcome to attend, like, looking at your list here.
I wouldn't recommend the AP exams.
No. I'm thinking the band concert on May 24th. That will be in the gymnasium?
I believe so, yes. Glad you're here.
Then the senior class day on June 1st.
Yep. Yeah, that's the day we'll be giving awards out for the senior class.
I've attended that before. That's nice.
Wonderful.
Of course, graduation. Are there other things besides the sporting events that Hadley had mentioned, like Monday and Tuesday are senior days?
Those are going to be my additions, is the senior days for the sporting events, too. Those are nice events. They recognize all the seniors before the game. I believe it's before the game. It could be after.
Were there any other things? Or—
No, I think that—I think you got them all.
Because the senior banquet is always—
It's—I—
A very guarded—
It's just for faculty and students, I believe.
Yes. It's a very guarded event.
Yes.
Very exclusive.
Yes.
So, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else?
No, thank you.
Yeah. I'm just going to say again that I think this agreement with Landmark College sounds like a really great program, so—I'm glad that we're also sort of like promoting that to the students. I think that's really exciting.
Yeah, and a big thank you to Molly for really kind of—
Yeah, you presented on a class spot. It was so nice. All right. For Hatfield Elementary School, let's hear from Mrs. Petrot.
All right, thank you. Yesterday, we had a kindergarten readiness event and puppet show that was on the lawn of the Hatfield Public Library. They were sponsored by families. They provided—the Collaborative was the sponsor of that, and they provided bags for families to offer supports and snacks and things that parents might need. We welcomed 5th grade families to a viewing of the Titanic creations that the 5th graders made. This was held in our cafeteria. It was open to all 5th grade families and was very well-attended. People were very excited to come back in and see student work.
Always.
Absolutely. We have completely—we have completed our in-person training for our two staff who are still OG—looking to become OG certified. They will be continuing their hours this summer as they work in our summer school program. Heads Up—I already know that—the Heads Up Hatfield Organization will be screening Race to be Human and the Hatfield Elementary School at 6:30 on May 25th. There'll be a follow-up panel that our own Mr. Wood will be facilitating and orchestrating. Our 4th through 6th grade students were encouraged to create posters for this event, and there will be prizes for those posters. Preschool letters have been sent out to families. We currently have 28 kindergartener—sorry, students slated for the fall. Kindergarten letters are going up at the end of the week, but my understanding is that the kindergarten letters are more of a, "Yes, we have received your intent on being a kindergartner," more information will come forthcoming. So in speaking with the kindergarten team, they would prefer to have something that goes out in—over the summer that invites them in for an orientation. We're still determining what that looks like. There seem to have been some preferences on either having the whole group come in to see the kindergarten classroom and teacher versus a one-on-one meeting. So we're still working out the details of what that will look like for the fall. Math MCAS will be given to all students in grades 3 through 6 next week, starting on Tuesday and Wednesday. Science MCAS only given to grade 5 the following week, the 24th and 25th. And the last day for preschool will be Monday, June 6th. On the calendar, it says the 3rd, but we utilize the same moving of the two days because of the snow days, and they are scheduling their annual picnic in the pavilion for June 9th because June 10th is field day, so they are accommodating that to ensure that we can utilize some of their pares and use them to support the students as they go from event to event.
Thank you. All right. What questions do committee members have?
Just a thank you, hearing about the posters for Race to Be Human, that's awesome. And I appreciate that it also recognizes that fourth grade is probably the youngest grade that families would want to bring their kids to that screening, is my understanding.
Yeah, in meeting with the Heads Up folks, during the meeting, we were talking about it. We were having that conversation about, you know, how, at what age do we want to support this whole notion of being able to understand and talk about mental health, particularly when it came to the courage about speaking about mental health? And we kind of collaboratively agreed that fourth grade would be the cutoff. We kind of toyed back and forth with third, and then it felt like fourth was a little bit more better grade.
The Hatfield Equity Alliance, which is part, who's co-sponsoring with them, did some work on just looking at the documentary, and I think the documentary makers, too, were saying fourth grade. So that's great.
When are they making the posters or where?
Those are, I'm not sure if the art teacher is supporting that, but most of those kiddos were making them probably at home. I don't know if class time is being given. We just kind of like put out that they're, to families that it was something that they could create. Hopefully, people will take advantage of doing that.
I had a question. Oh, what was it?
I have one.
Go ahead. Yeah, let me think.
What important dates do you have for school committee members to look out for from your school? Like, is there a spelling bee this year?
So, not this year, but it will be brought back.
Okay.
So part of the discussion at our last staff meeting around things that we could try to do this, the spring, everyone agreed that they liked the notion of having a spelling bee, but they would like to have it tweaked. Part of it is they want to redo, they feel like the words are kind of like done. Like, they're like, we can spell every single word. So they want to go back and kind of like give it a refresh, a reboot. We also agreed that they felt this time of year particularly, I guess it was held around the same time of year, was very much more adding to the stress of all the other things. So they would like to see it happen in March, almost like a March Madness kind of, you know, the March Madness spelling bee. So we have a committee of people that said that they'd be willing to come fall, start working on that so we can get that off the ground for March.
That's awesome.
The Jane, we don't have that, well, Jane Yolen spelling, and the Jane Yolen writing contest is still happening, and that's not happening until a little later on in June. So the deadline for that has been May 20th, and then she's going to be coming in sometime the second week of June. At this point, the Heads Up documentary, you are all welcome to. I don't think you want to come in for MCAS either.
Over the AP test, yes.
Yeah, totally. Though again, you know, you might be able to.
And there was no elementary band concert scheduled?
There is something coming up in June, but he was looking to only give that to fifth and sixth grade families. I don't know if that was, that wasn't really something we had, Duncan might be able to talk more about. That was more of an in-house, more about getting the kids excited about.
I just know that there were some parents that were wondering if there was an elementary concert this year or not. They had.
Just the small one on Tuesday, June 7th, during the school day. Chris and I were talking. I think we're planning on this winter having a more typical winter concert.
Yay. Sorry.
Our families, if it's in the day, are families of those students welcome? Okay.
I'm sure Notice will go home to those families then.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know everybody's, like, I went to the Titanic thing, and it was just awesome. And the families that attended were just, the excitement of just being back in the building and attending something and seeing the kids work, and the kids were excited to see people. It just really felt nice again, so.
And we have definitely been working at staff meeting about figuring out and having a year-long plan on how to engage more families into the school. So they are all for it and are excited for it. So fingers crossed COVID keeps at bay and all the, you know, we can continue to have another full year of school because they want to bring back all the things that are, that make Hatfield Elementary, Hatfield Elementary.
So then, this is probably a good time to ask the two principals if you're planning anything for throughout the next school year to engage fifth and sixth graders up at Smith Academy to get them interested in middle school at Smith Academy so that we can keep our flow of students going?
Yes. The short answer is yes.
Okay.
We have an ironed-out specific detail.
We had kind of talked about the idea of that, so just kind of wanted to make sure it's still on the radar of looking into more ways to have some cross-connection there between the two buildings.
Not just at the end of the year, but throughout the year.
Right, throughout the year to keep them excited and engaged about, wow, you know, Smith Academy.
Yes.
And not just with the elementary school, but also with like the rec program, having our varsity players do some work with the top rec leagues as well to get them psyched up.
That's awesome.
We had three girls at our game last night.
Oh, awesome. That's great.
I'm really sad I didn't get a picture, but it was awesome. Yeah. Do you have more questions?
Did you remember yours?
No, I have it. Yeah, I got it. Are we doing a moving up day?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, that is scheduled for, I might mess up the date.
I can't remember. We decided this morning.
You are doing it.
Between the two, yes, we are definitely doing that, for sure.
Is it for all of the grades or just like sixth moving up to Smith Academy?
That one is just for sixth moving up. It's more of a, it's a day for those students to come and kind of see what it's like, to meet the teachers. So that's not a, I think we're talking about kind of two separate things throughout the year, having activities that engage students in the hopes of keeping them in district. But this is, this is a moving up day for students who are planning to come up to Smith Academy.
Yeah, that's what I was, we're at the end of the year. I didn't know if you, I think in the past, it's been so long because of COVID, but we've actually done it for all of the grades. They've stepped up to see what their next classroom would look like, too.
In my previous district, that was what happened on the very last day of school.
Yeah, so I just didn't know if that's what you're planning on.
It wasn't even just, but I'm still.
We used to do that, but then we stopped announcing who the next teacher was, and that came like in August, who your teacher assignment was, because they worked on it over the summer, classroom assignments. But even if they could just go to see the next classroom and see.
You could be in one of these two classrooms. This could be one of your two teachers.
This is what, you know, especially like third graders going to fourth, now it's upstairs. So, you know, seeing this is what it's like.
The first graders have been asking me. They're like, we remembered in kindergarten, we got to go to first grade. So are we going to get to see second grade? So yes, they would definitely get to move up.
That's awesome.
It's kind of fun.
It is fun. I had another, last year, parents put on a kindergarten graduation, and I just didn't know if that is a thought for the school. And I know all of us, or maybe Kathy can shed some light, but all of us are new to this since maybe they've talked about it in the past. And I, it was a really sweet thing that we did for the kindergartners, and I just didn't know if that's a possibility.
I haven't had a conversation yet with the kindergarten teachers about that. I think part of the reasoning behind that initially last year was because I think the parents truly wanted to make a big deal because the kids finally came back in person, was a little bit of the history that I'd heard about, you know, how that became, that came about. I have not heard anything from either the classroom teachers about that being a thing, but I could find out.
I think it'd be really sweet to try and start that back up, or not back up.
It wasn't supported in past years. I'm remembering, it was just, they wanted to keep the significance of graduation to the seniors in 12th grade, and they did something for the sixth graders because the sixth graders are leaving elementary school and moving to a different building. And the concern was, well, if you do it for kindergarten, then, you know, other grades are going to want to do it, and then it's just.
I don't think it makes sense for other grades, though.
Well.
I agree with Kathy, though. That's what I heard was sort of the barrier in the past.
Well, then preschool will want to do a graduation because they're no longer in preschool, and they're going into kindergarten. And then, you know, it just opened up too much that they didn't want to dilute the significance of the other things.
So it'll be a parent's event then because the schools don't support it or we're not willing to talk about supporting it, it sounds like, so.
No, I think that was just the history of what happened.
I was just explaining the history of it. And being part of last year's kindergarten graduation, I think also it was just celebrating those kiddos who made it through the COVID times and.
And a lot of half-days.
Yes.
Every day of halftime.
You know, they were just bounced around between remote and hybrid and this and that. And we were just wanting to acknowledge their versatility and just surviving that. So the parents did that, and it was very sweet, but I just don't know that, how the district would feel about.
That every grade survived that, too.
Yes, yes.
It wasn't just like the kindergartners survived that. Everybody was on this.
Kindergarten hadn't, some of them hadn't had school experience, whereas a first, second, or third grader might have already had a typical school year before COVID hit. So we were just kind of acknowledging their uniqueness.
By parents.
It was completely parent-driven.
There was no school involvement.
Hundred percent.
It was not school-sponsored.
Invited, but they didn't involve. All right. Well, I guess I would like to, maybe, obviously, maybe this year isn't a thing, but look into seeing if that's doable for the future. Doesn't need to cost anything. Just a nice little ceremony.
Well, I mean, at a minimum, it might be if people that already own the robes want to donate them just as a way to pass them to future parents who put it together. Might simplify things.
We bought gowns and cats.
Yeah, we did. It's very cute.
Kindergartners decked in purple. It's nothing quite like it.
It was all very cute.
But I think there is also some upside to families doing that, pulling together, because there's a bond that forms when the parents come together to support that. That if the school was doing it, it wouldn't be the same.
But I think it would be nice if they supported it, like the teacher showed it.
I think there was a reason that didn't happen that was legit, that wasn't, wasn't a sign of not supporting the kids.
No, no, I know. I'm just, okay, that's fine. Doesn't need to be tonight. Just like to see it talked about.
I had just a quick question, if that's okay. So we have 28 preschoolers for the fall, two classes, 14 and 14, we think? We don't know yet.
The weird thing about it is there will always be, yes, but there will always be 11 kids in the room on each day.
Okay. All right, just because of halftime and, yeah, stuff like that.
And that doesn't include anybody who might move in over the summer.
Right, right. I was going to ask about our capacity to accept more preschool students or if that was kind of the top, we still have spaces. Okay, so we can put that out to the community because we've got a great preschool program.
There's preschool space, there's kindergarten space.
Yes, kindergarten, too.
Do we have, do you know?
We like 15.
It's in preschool?
Couple more spots because we need to reserve a couple for early intervention.
Are we talking about preschool, just preschool or kindergarten? There's kind of, just preschool. I thought I heard you say kindergarten, which is why.
She said kindergarten.
I gave a hard and fast number for the preschool number. I don't have one for kindergarten.
And I'm sorry, it was how many more spaces for preschool that you have?
Four or five?
It depends on.
I thought I heard you say 15 or something, and.
Well, she was saying max.
Max, 15 per class.
I thought you said that there were 15 more spaces. I was going, whoa. I didn't think so, that's why. I wanted to clarify, so.
Goodness gracious, yeah.
Yes.
I'd be a little overwhelmed.
So maybe four or five spots. Okay.
All right. That's great, though. I'm happy that we have 28 students. Good. All right.
I just had one more question on the OG training. So the, so two staff members completed their in-person training, so that's fantastic. So that's, is that everyone that we put through?
No.
Okay, so are there more that are finishing or are they no longer pursuing?
No longer pursuing.
Okay. And so that makes a total of how many in-house OG trained?
Four.
Four, and is that spread amongst both schools or is that just elementary?
Only elementary.
Okay. Can you tell us the two teachers that are the two people that are finishing it?
Kim Robinson and Kelsey Brunel.
Okay. Do we feel like, because there was staff that started it and didn't finish, do we feel like there's still district need to continue to onboard?
I don't believe so. I think we have enough. I think four people is plenty for the size of our school.
Any other questions? Okay. Let's hear from our Director of Student Services, Ms. Bremner.
Now, I'm going to give you a piece of paper. Sorry.
We'll let it go.
We only have a couple things. We're just huge, so. So we finished our tiered focus monitoring onsite with Desi on Thursday of April vacation. Yay, vacation. So that went fine. We'll get their report, make any adjustments we need. And nothing major came out of that, that we know of. It didn't seem like it in our exit interview. And then we finished our school choice. The way that we document special education through school choice, we finished all of those spreadsheets last week, which was, it just takes a long time. And Denise Ibelito and I went through what she crafted when she did the EL tiered focus monitoring of our Hatfield EL Handbook of Procedures, which we didn't have previously. It was kind of in different spots, but through this process, she pulled it all into one document, which is now on the website under the ELL section of the Student Services section. So that whole procedure book is there and shared with all the staff. We are having, any sixth grader who's having an IEP or other meeting between now and the end of the year, we're inviting the middle school team, too. Anybody else, Robin will be in touch with, to have transition meetings on the morning of the 8th is what I have right now. So we'll have, make sure we have like an extra meeting just to make sure that they're all set to move up to Smith. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Bremner?
No, just a big thank you for the diligence on the school choice documentation because I know there's financial benefit for all of that effort. Thank you. It's a lot of work.
All right. So if it is with the permission of the committee, if it's okay with you guys, I would like to take the agenda out of order. Our committee reports will involve some discussion and voting. So if possible, I would like to move forward with the band trip.
Sure.
Everybody okay? Been diligently waiting. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. For those of you who haven't met me, I'm Duncan Hurst, the band director for HES and Smith Academy. The reason I'm here today is I would like to continue the tradition of a big band trip that would happen every three years before COVID. I believe the trip that they went on was to New York City with the middle school and high school bands. I have included a packet of information about a trip in April of 2023 to the World Strides Heritage Festival in Philadelphia. So that's, I'm here seeking approval to move ahead with planning that trip. Just a few things. The, in your packet, in the top right-hand corner of the first page, there are two sets of dates for the festival. There's April 20th through 23rd and also April 27th through 30th. I would propose we use April 27th and 30th as our dates. That would be a Thursday-through-Sunday trip. So we would leave early in the morning on Thursday, drive the four and a half, five hours to Philadelphia. When we get there, we would meet with a onsite tour manager who would handle all the logistics of the trip. And they're with us for the entire duration of the trip. We would have a masterclass with renowned conductors with each ensemble. And then there would be some excursions in the afternoon that day. On the Friday would be the performance day of the trip, where they go and they perform for some adjudicators. They have a clinic. They get to hear some other bands or choirs or whoever else is there performing. And this is a, would be a national event. People would be coming from all over. We have some smaller circuits here in New England, like the Gradius Festival, which we're going to next week. But you only get very local groups, Massachusetts, Connecticut, maybe New Hampshire. But beyond that, you don't get to hear any groups. maybe New Hampshire, but beyond that, you don't get to hear any groups from anywhere beyond that. So this is one of the big pros to going into more of a national circuit here. After the performance on Friday, we'd have some excursions that afternoon and also in the morning on Saturday. Saturday evening would be the awards banquet where all the performing groups go to a ballroom. They announce awards, they do recognitions for really great performances, and then the students have time to interact with peers from different areas, get to make some new friends and have a blast, and then we come home on Sunday. So that's, you know, a basic itinerary of what the trip would be. I chose World Strides as the group for a few reasons. Performance festivals are their bread and butter. That's really what they primarily focus on. They do all sorts of events, but they do tons of these events every year and they have them running very, very smoothly. They have very high reviews where they really handle all of the not-so-fun parts of planning a big trip. They handle buses, they handle the hotels, they handle the food. They really do it all, which is fantastic. They also have accidental medical and dental insurance for all travelers, including liability coverage. And as I said earlier, they have the onsite tour manager who's there every step of the way, making sure that's a really smooth-running event. I do have some cost estimates, so right now with absolutely zero fundraising being done, so if this were just the families paying 100% for the trip with no fundraising, it would, my estimate is about $800 to $1,000 per student for the trip. Now, to help offset these, I would be planning some additional fundraising opportunities. We have the annual pie fundraiser each fall where students go and sell pies around Thanksgiving time and. And then I would also plan a mattress-selling fundraiser via Custom Fundraising Solutions. It's a really unique fundraiser where the, they basically bring a bunch of mattresses and turn the gym into a mattress warehouse for a day, and then students go and hand out pam, or hand out flyers to whoever they can, and they show up and they get discounts on mattresses and then a certain cut goes to the music program. It's really cool, and it's been really successful in other places. If you go to their website, you see some ginormous checks being written out to.
I just have the language to tell me about this.
I think it can be really successful. I think they're, they say the average family is buying a new mattress every 10 years or so. And so that ends up being a good number of people who are looking for a mattress at any given time. And what's great about both of these fundraisers is that the companies that do that, they track how much each student fundraises. So for example, if a student goes all out with the fundraising, that money applies directly to their trip. Their trip will be cheaper if they do a bunch of fundraising, which I think is really special. They get rewarded for the amount of work that they put in, in preparation for the trip. So that was my spiel about the trip. I'm happy to answer any questions. The last couple of pages are just kind of add-ons for the trip, which could be considered. They go into prices per student on some of these things and different places to eat.
All right, can you just tell me the dates again real quick?
That would be Thursday, April 27th through Sunday, April 30th.
That's actually my first question is, was there a reason you chose that week rather than the previous week, the 20th through the 23rd?
Because I believe the week before would be April Vacation Week, and the reason why I would prefer to have the later dates would be I would hate for anyone to miss a trip or miss this trip because maybe their families have already scheduled to go somewhere on that vacation.
Or the Spring Musical.
I wouldn't want to disrupt anyone's.
Well, that's true. The school musical usually runs that week.
Usually during vacation week.
Working to change that.
And. Okay.
And something else that could be done is I could host optional rehearsals during that week where anyone who's around and is willing can come, and we can get a few extra rehearsals in before we head out. It would just be that much better with our music that we'd be performing.
That makes sense, then. How many kids are currently in band? So how many do you expect that you would be traveling with?
So at Smith Academy right now, between the middle school and high school bands, we have 63 students enrolled in band. We have a large senior class that's graduating this year. I'm expecting that we'll probably be traveling with 60 students next year approximately.
I was going to ask, what groups were coming, just anyone in the Smith Academy band?
Yeah, the middle school and high school bands.
Okay.
Okay, so it's seven through 12?
Seven through 12, yes.
Yep. Well, I'm excited that this is coming back. I know it was something that was really popular and supported well in all the years past. They went to.
So many different places.
To different places, but I know they went to Hershey Park a number of times. So this is a little different, but I'm excited for it. There looks to be some really great opportunities in there to see the area a little bit and do extra things. When will you need commitments from kids?
That's a good question. It wouldn't be until the fall. So if I, if this was approved, I would call back to the World Strides people, I'd have a conversation with them, make sure we're on the same page with all that. I'd put together a packet of info to send home to the families to look over over the summer, and then I'd probably get, try and get commitments from the families by mid, late September. And then begin all the fundraising and all the fun stuff for that.
And I'm assuming that we have a mechanism in place for any family that this would be a hardship for, that we could support them so that they don't miss out?
So we do have an account that some resources go to, but part of the fundraising we might have to talk about, set aside to make that possible.
You know, I'm thinking criteria in the past before we had free lunches, but people that qualified for free or reduced lunch, you know.
Which is still a possibility because that process still exists, actually, so.
Okay, I just would hate for any family to miss out for that reason.
Certainly.
Yeah, especially because this sounds so great.
Yes, I'm very excited for this.
Me too. At what age do kids start band in the elementary school?
They start in fifth grade.
They start in fifth grade? I just have a recommendation for fundraising. I don't know if you or any of the students for a period of time would offer some type of music lessons to your under-fifth graders.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
It's been very hard to find, it's been very hard to find people to give music lessons. And having that be local and having it go to the fundraiser, if you ran, you know, whatever it is, a 12-week or whatever introductory to a instrument or whatever, could potentially, could potentially, I think, make a lot of money.
Yeah, I like that idea a lot.
And it would be great for the community.
Probably help get students excited for band.
That's a good idea.
How are the numbers for fifth and sixth graders for?
Sixth grade is a small group. They were the group that started in the middle of all the COVID stuff. So there's 12 students in band in sixth grade right now. We have a much larger group in fifth grade. We have 26, 27, 26 in fifth grade band right now.
Okay. Out of approximately 40 of the grade. That's good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Do we need a vote tonight?
We should have a vote tonight. I'm remiss in, given the volume or the total cost of the project, we technically have to put this out to bid to make sure that all vendors have an attempt to, you know, get our business. Anything over $10,000 is a requirement, so I will work with Dr. Driscoll and Mr. Hurst to craft the RFP and we'll post that, and I need your vote to get that process going.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the band trip for April of 2023. I don't want to say as presented because presented is with World Strides and that. Yeah.
You can just say the band, the band trip.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Any other discussions, sorry?
No.
No, all right, all in favor?
Hi.
Good luck with this.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the time.
We really appreciate it. No, this is exciting. This is a great part of the meeting.
I love this.
This is wonderful.
It's the kind of stuff we love to do.
Took three years to get excited.
The good things, rather than talking about.
I didn't think, I'm still disappointed they didn't say we could go to prom.
I know, I know. We didn't get the invitation.
All right. All right, so let's go back in the agenda to policy, and we'll hear from Ms. Valoni on her report.
Okay, so in your packets, you have, we took what was the Chromebook policy and procedures. That's been revised, so you have Chromebook procedures, which is now, which is now that separate lengthy document, and then you have an acceptable use policy for technology for your review.
So I will just add that we, this is our current policy, IJNDB, and the section entitled Individual Chromebook Use is the addition, this bottom paragraph here, the coloration did not come through in the copy. Yep, so this is, this is a revision to current policy, and then we would maintain the Chromebook procedures and information as a separate document, right? Because it's pretty granular.
Thank you for pulling that out and having the policy piece separate from that lengthy.
I think it's the right way to go.
That lengthy procedural form or document.
Yeah, it's robust.
Yes.
So it's about one paragraph. I don't know if there's any discussion in the committee. This is our second, sort of our second reading on Chromebook policy.
This is so much clearer, like this is so much easier for families to understand, for us to understand. And so for those who aren't reading this, the language, those who access this privilege will also be required to purchase insurance to cover device malfunction. I think it's super clear that you don't have to do this. You can still use your own device. You could still use the device at school and not take it home, but should you elect to, there's a piece that comes with that.
Yep, right. And we felt that putting it in the acceptable use policy was just sort of the right policy to put it in because it keeps this Chromebook program in the context of all the technology, you know, that we're using.
Yeah. Well, then I will make a motion to.
We don't actually.
Well.
Oh.
I was going to waive the third reading, but.
Okay, we just didn't have a vote on the agenda?
Oh.
Never mind.
I'm sorry.
You know what? This is new enough. That's great. People can have comments.
I'm super happy that we love it, so we'll bring it back.
It was clear and concise, and I didn't feel like it needed additional readings.
Awesome.
We'll wait.
Yeah, well, I'll just put it on the agenda.
It'll be an easy thing next time.
I do think, Mr. Wood, you said right, that right now, most students are opting to use their own devices at home. Is that what you had said?
Well, as of the last conversation I had with Mr. Duval, but I don't know if that's changed since then.
It's kind of mixed. It's slow, I would say it's slowly changing. I think it, the reality is if someone needs to charge their device, it's easier just to bring it home and charge it and then bring it back than it is to find it from your locker, bring it to a special spot, charge it in a special spot, pick it up in the morning, bring it back and bring it to class.
Okay.
So current students are taking them home?
Some are, yeah.
Currently, there is no fee imposed for the insurance, okay.
Yep, I think the administration felt we just need to roll it out and get it going for this year. Yeah, for next year.
Yeah, we needed the devices for MCAS.
Yes. Perfect. Well, I think the Policy Committee appreciates the feedback. Jen, did you want to speak to the admissions policy at all?
Sure, so we made the recommended edits to the school admissions policy, so that's in your packet and that is ready for the.
Basically, two very short paragraphs.
And that is ready for the second reading.
I appreciate the amendments that you did.
I do also just want to clarify that we wrote this as October 1 because prior to that, you can still apply for school choice.
Right. And that's the day financially, the town has just, like, that's when you're paid for. So if you move before that, there's another, you know, that town could be paying for you.
Right.
I think it's very clear and it covers the intent that the committee discussed at our last meeting.
Great.
Check.
Yeah, to the next meeting.
And the last thing we do, and I don't think it's included in the packet yet.
It is not, yeah.
But we, we did further look at the policy rubric for equity and discussed moving forward with any policy edits or any new policies, using that rubric as just a checkpoint to make sure that we are including and considering everything that needs to be included and considered in policy.
Yeah, like a work tool, kind of. The other thing, just if I may add, Jen.
Sure.
We also discussed involving some of the students from the Student Equity Alliance in one of our policy meetings to take a look at the equity rubric and get some feedback from them, which is why we didn't feel it was really ready to move forward for any kind of committee approval, but we think that would be a great venue for students to be involved in the governance of their own community, so.
Good idea.
Yeah, thanks. All right.
And that's it.
Any other questions or comments for policy? All right, we'll go to budget. You have a report?
Sure. We met last Friday before the town meeting, just to make sure we're all on the same page about the budget being presented and talked about anything that we might have to defend come town meeting last night, and after town meeting last night, our budget was approved. So I think that's about it.
Did you sleep better?
Yes, it was amazing. I was very excited. Now I'm, yeah, ready to keep going. So that's basically what we went over.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then I see you have some transfers here that we.
And we talked about these transfers.
And we did talk about the transfers in our meeting, yeah. We just need to even some lines out.
But I, I have to say, I'm happy that we're looking them at as a collection. Where in previous times, we have looked at them.
Every single month.
Every meeting, and you don't really see a story, like you can't really see what's going on. Having them come together, I think, helps that a lot.
Yeah.
So a plus for transparency.
Yeah, for sure.
I also am noticing that we're not really using superintendent other.
Correct.
In fact.
So I appreciate that, too.
Yes.
It really streamlines budgeting, and like you said, I like being able to see the story.
Yeah, how it's working. So that's something we've talked about early on with Superintendent Wood, that we want more transparency in budgeting, easier to follow, and so there isn't a giant slush.
Yep.
So can we have a little more information maybe on that, that last one that is for $15,000?
There was a, it was a new hire and the needs of our student body. There was a, it was a new hire and the needs of our student body changed a little bit. And so it went to a full-time hire as opposed to a not-quite-full-time hire.
Okay.
And that was the cost differential.
Okay. And then. And then the coordinator for $4,000, is that a similar situation of?
It was how things were budgeted previously, that we had to move some stuff little by little with, again, yeah, it went back to the hiring, but it was a piece of it.
Okay.
So when we, when new people came in at different salary rates.
Okay.
With different backgrounds, I mean, like significantly different.
Makes sense.
And everything else is like, sorry, principals did not travel, but thank you for helping offset the school supplies.
I'm sorry that the School Committee still doesn't have a secretary.
We're still looking.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfers as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll move now officially into the Business Affairs portion of our meeting and begin with some meeting minutes. We have minutes from April 13th and April 25th.
I'd like to take them separately.
Sure.
Well, I guess I can ask first before. The April 13th meeting, wasn't that the meeting that they talked about the trip to Panama? That was our Wednesday meeting and there's just.
Yes, it was.
There's no mention of.
Not in here.
I just would like it reflected.
We did it right after public comment.
Right. It was a really nice presentation and I just want to acknowledge, you know, that they came and spoke to us. So to continue talking then about the April 13th minutes, I'll make a motion to approve the April 13th minutes with these amendments. And that would be adding after public comment that we were given a presentation on the Panama trip that occurred. And there was a typo in my name and the attendees. But other than that, I didn't have anything, I don't know if anybody else did, if somebody wants to second.
I'll second that.
Were there any other comments on these minutes? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right.
Chair, like to make a motion to approve the minutes for April 25th as presented?
I will second with a friendly amendment, the couple of typos of my name again.
Yeah, I think this spelled.
I think it's an autocorrect.
It's an autocorrect.
It happened once and I think now it's just picking.
I think that is a. I think that's a loca city somewhere.
I don't know, but I just.
I was gonna say, it's spelled consistently wrong.
But, so that's just my second with that little minor addition.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great, all right. Do we have a town meeting update from Mr. Wood at all?
Just that it went extremely well.
In attendance.
Most of you were in attendance, the meeting was well-attended, and there really was no specific questions about the school budget. I thought the Finance Committee did a fabulous job of really teeing up the overall picture of finances for the community and their desire to really take a look at planning going forward so that the schools can be invested in and taken care of along with all departments. So I thought it was a very positive meeting overall.
Yeah, I was personally very pleased to see quite public support from the Select Board, from the Finance Committee, and from the community, which was really great.
Definitely.
And people spoke glowingly about the schools, which was really wonderful. And the budget was approved. Was there any other discussion? I just wanted to have this on the agenda in case we had anything to cover.
I just want to thank the Budget Committee for working very hard and for thanking everybody for their support of our budget.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you so much. You're welcome. All right, there's no vote, just an okay. All right, moving along, I apologize, we usually have an information sheet whenever we have donations, just so we can see the amount and who it's from, but Mr. Wood has some information for us.
So we're back and just retrieved the check of folks if you want to look at it. This was a survey that Martha Elliott, the nurse at Smith Academy, completed back in the fall. It was a, I won't say it's a random marketing, you know, school nurses were targeted as medical people. It was for a tobacco use survey. And the company is actually a marketing company. Google it because there was no information, all I have is the check. But it was for $500, so it was well worth her time. And so this will go to, into the nurse's account, which is a sub-account in the student activities account.
She like won, it was like a lottery?
No, I don't think so.
You just get $500 just for participating?
More and more there, they do.
If you're a professional, they're looking for.
I don't get the same ones.
Not usually this much, I mean, this is pretty extensive.
It's substantial, that's why.
They're having a hard time finding nurses.
But I've seen them for 75 or 100, they'll do a, they'll give you, you know, give you an Amazon, a choice like of an Amazon card or you can donate it to an organization that they offer you, but this is going to come directly to us.
There's no, like, obligation to the school for anything?
No, no.
Or we don't have to, like, use their products?
No, like I say, there's no, it's the National Youth Tobacco Survey.
Cool.
Is it?
So that's for issuing it.
For the CDC.
She issued it and, right? That's for issuing this survey? Yeah, she responded.
She responded.
Oh, she responded.
So I'll make a motion.
Assuming we can only do it once, even though we have two nurses.
I know, how many more nurses work at the school?
Did you say it was through the CDC?
I think it's for the CDC, I'm reading it.
The information gets sent to them from the marketing company.
Yeah, but the marketing company's got the check.
That's what I was looking for, was who was the client of the marketing company?
It says CDC slash E's.
Taking big tobacco money.
You'll love E's.
And you said that the intent is to take this $500 and put it directly back to the nurses?
Yes, for supplies.
Great.
Wonderful.
Well, then I'll make a motion to accept the donation as presented by Superintendent Wood, the $500.
Okay. All right, any further discussion?
A shout out to Nurse Martha.
I know.
For raising the bar for.
This has been one of the happiest school committee meetings we've had in a while. This is great. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Lastly, in this section of the agenda, we have a discussion of the memorial bricks. At a previous meeting, we discussed the possibility of memorial trees. This is attributed to me, but I'd like to hear from Ms. Englehart.
So I reached out to a contact that I have in Williamsburg where they have created what they call Angel Park. And it's a very lovely area set in the center of town, well, landscape, they hold music events there throughout the summer, it's very nice. And they told me that they started off, they purchased a pallet of bricks. You can go anywhere to purchase, you know, shop around and get a good price on your bricks or what style of bricks or what color of bricks, whatever you'd like. They reached out to a company, Negus &amp; Taylor in Greenfield. They do monuments, gravestones, things like that. So they have an agreement with them for the engraving. The people in Williamsburg are currently charging $60 a brick, which covers the cost of the brick, the engraving, and there is a small profit left over that they use for the upkeep of their park. So with that information, you know, we could look at it further of style of brick, color of brick, we could look at different companies that may do engraving. They tend to hold on to a certain number of requests for bricks until they get enough to send, that's their agreement with the company that's doing the engraving because the engraver has to set up the machine and the template to do the work and it doesn't make sense to do it for three. So maybe they wait until they have a certain number of 10 or more to do it and they get a better price that way. So those are options, but I also reached out to Hef, to the foundation, to see if this is something that they would want to take on as a fundraiser for them. Kind of alleviating the school department from managing, running it and figuring out all the logistics. They haven't gotten back to me yet. They did tell me, though, that, like the PTA, Hef is really struggling in part because of the pandemic, that they have a very, very small group of people that are currently involved. And in fact, they have discussed dissolving and they're not sure if that is going to move forward or now that, you know, we're coming out of the pandemic, if they want to kind of re-energize and revamp themselves. So the person I spoke with is taking it back to the other few members that are still involved and will let us know. Another option I thought of was perhaps Smith Academy trustees, that it might be something that they want to do since it is more or less memorial for alums or people connected to the school. So those are two options if we don't want to keep it amongst the school. So I don't know if Mr. Wood has an opinion on whether the school should not take on this and try to get it to somebody else. I think it would be.
I think it's great that if it can be a fundraiser for a group and they're looking for one, you know, maybe the band.
I didn't know if it really fit with the band, you know, like, I was trying to think of.
They're giving music lessons now.
They're giving you lessons, they're all set.
Yes, yes.
But yeah, I think, I think we should give it first choice to those organizations.
Right, let those two have the right of refusal. We might also want to have a conversation with the people that are doing our walkway and see if we want to tie it into the walkway around Smith Academy at all and what would that look like? Because they might want some input on the style of brick or the size of the brick. I mean, what Williamsburg is doing is just your typical sized red brick. But, you know, as you know, there are many options out there, so that's just the starting information that I have for you all about bricks. I feel like it's a very reasonable price. I mean, they're doing $60, I think we could do anywhere between 60 and 100 depending on what kind of maintenance we're talking about or what kind of installation we're talking about. And it's still a reasonable price to do a memorial for somebody without being really prohibitive. I mean, the cost of trees can be a lot of money, so this would.
It would be higher.
Well, and it really opens it up, I think. I really like the idea, yeah.
Thank you for all the research.
Yeah.
And like, we were just talking about this. Thank you. By chance, did the engraver have any insights in terms of if it was a different size than a brick or something made out of something different? If that changed their setup means?
I didn't reach out to the engraver because I wasn't sure. I just talked to the person that is handling it for Williamsburg. Different engravers might have different price points. I didn't, so I didn't shop around with that until we have more concrete information of if we're really wanting to move forward with this and who would be moving forward with it.
I was wondering the same though, Kristy, like, if you have a red brick, there's like a paver, you know, or something like that.
That you might not need the same batch that might give you flexibility.
Those would be things, I think, to look into.
The form that Williamsburg uses details, you know, the cost and what it includes. And then for the engraving, it's three lines and each line has 13 spaces for characters, whether it is a blank space or is filled with a letter. So you can choose whatever you want to say or put on your brick if you fit within those parameters of 13 characters, three lines.
Nice, that's great.
And I'm sure that came from the engraver that they use, that that is their setup, that is the minimum or the maximum that they can fit on their brick.
Right, okay. Well, I think it does sound like a great, you know, project for either of those organizations, you know, that you discussed.
There is one other place I could get information. I know that Pioneer Valley Regional School has, outside of the school, they have a, or they did have a concession stand right there on their athletic field. And surrounding the concession stand building, they have brick pavers that they have sold in the past as fundraisers. So I could reach out to someone at Pioneer and find out if they did it. I have a feeling that it was their version of SAC, their Athletic Supporting Group, that.
Booster.
Did that because it's all around the athletic field. And I think it was supporting like the concession stand or something. But I could get information from them as well that they've done something similar. But I think I'll wait to hear if either Hef or the trustees would be interested before I take on more research for us.
Yeah, definitely. Any other discussion or questions from the committee?
No, I just love it.
Yeah.
Did you follow up with the people that had sent us?
I did, and I have not heard back from them yet, so.
Did you tell them that we were looking into the bricks? Okay. I just didn't want them to feel like we were ignoring their initial request.
Lovely request. Okay, I don't know that we need to vote on anything.
No.
Right now.
No, there's nothing there yet.
But we can, you know, wait to hear back from those groups and look forward to a further report.
By our next meeting, I should have information on if Hef.
If they get them.
If Hef is not interested, I will reach out to the trustees and see if it's something that they would like to pursue or not.
Okay. All righty, thank you so much for looking into that. Are there any other items school committee members would like to bring forward for further attention?
Do we have our June date set?
So that is one thing that I wanted to discuss. As we all know, town elections are next Tuesday, May 17. And after that, we will need to reorganize the school committee. According to our schedule that we have set for ourselves, our next meeting would be June 8. If that still works for, at least plotting it out for now.
Is that doable for you, Jen, or do you need a different night?
Nope, I'm good on the 8th.
June 8th?
Okay.
Does that sound okay for you guys?
Yeah.
It's good for you, Jen? Okay.
As long as we're looking at the calendar, I was reminded of something if I could just throw out.
Certainly.
Hopefully, you guys got an email yesterday or today.
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 Today, for the division meeting, which is June 9. It's going to be an interesting meeting. I heard the speaker's presentation when I went to the leadership training in Marlboro a couple months ago. He's a School Committee member from Plymouth and is very active in legislative advocacy. It's not a dry presentation. Let me just tell you that he's an excellent speaker. It's informative, he's engaging, and I would encourage any of you to attend. It's right at Smith Voak. You don't have to travel very far. We provided some very nice snacks at our last division meeting a couple weeks ago, so I encourage you to come.
Thanks.
That's just my plug.
No, I love it. I saw that email come through with your name on it.
Yep.
Made me happy.
But, you know, you might not think that, eh, I'm not really into advocacy at the legislative level, but it's just interesting what he has to say, and I think everyone would take a little bit of something away from it, so...
Sure. All right. Anything else? All right. Hearing nothing, I will move that we enter executive session and do not return to open session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares. And I believe that to be true. We will take a roll call vote. Thank you for your second.
Maloney, aye.
Stidischewski, aye.
Bench, aye.
Boudreaux, aye. Engelhardt, aye.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you all so much.